With the meeting and final plan submission.
Hey there, how are you?
Good.
Good, they can't come on to guess.
The camera slides.
Cool. Hey there, how are you? Wonder for yourself.
Good.
Good.
Yeah.
I'm not going to do the best one here.
Pretty flawless, guys. You're pretty flawless tonight.
I handed out anything.
We're up here.
Yeah, they're supposed to be.
Yeah, yeah.
We have our.
We have.
So we're trying to work.
Hey, you want to?
And if someone has more, I'll take that kind of.
Do you have a problem with bringing up?
Is there any more?
Transparent. Nothing. You feel like the worry in some of those problems? This week. They were all, they weren't. Have you heard about those? Oh, yes, yeah, you can talk about them. I got a little hurt. Did you ever hear? Did you ever hear?
Another plan that's been over.
That's you, there's that one.
Yeah. The black line is this. So there's not sidewalks on sides of the streets that don't have. So. Drainage. Yeah, so this drainage here comes down into here and goes out. Rest of the development drains through this one. Yeah, I mean, there were some spots that would be outside of drainage way a little bit, but we're not double counting these that make part. And drainage is just drainage.
Much. Well, that's where. My question is, I think I could answer it. When we. Not required. Are these going to combine at that time or is this a small?
No, I don't think you need. So I'm on the thirty. Come on that. I'm just looking at anybody that in force for. Except for.
Okay.
My duty is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Consent calendar. We have the adoption of the agenda. I have a motion to approve consent calendar. There a second? All in favor? Aye. To. We need to have Mike's.
Norm, these are for us projected with our voices. We're recording or we're on YouTube tonight, so. But we don't normally ask you to wear other people's mics, so we won't ask you to put on the. Do speak loudly, please.
Do we have any visitors to be heard for the planning and zoning commission meeting that are not on the agenda? We have old business, our new business is plan development district rezone hearing.
Before we go too far, I have a conflict of interest. I do work for the firm that is producing this, so I would like to abstain from commissioner dialogue and voting tonight. So I'll join the audience.
Plan development district rezone hearing. Can't even have a development corporation has submitted a. Application for rezone parcel two zero zero five zero point five eight point zero zero one for the proposed plan development district. Motion will be required to recommend or not recommend approval to city commission rezoning. This is the time and place for the hearing on the proposed rezoning for Liberty Liberty Park Edition at parcel two hundred point five zero point five eight point zero zero one in the area between Riverview Road and Kenwood Drive and north of Fifth Street, which is Highway eighteen. We are hearing this as the planning and zoning commission. Hearing is now open. Purpose of this hearing is to discuss and make recommendations to the city commission regarding the request to rezone the property located at parcel two hundred point five zero point five eight point oh one in the area between Riverview Road, Kenwood Drive, north of Fifth Street, Highway eighteen. Request is to rezone to a planned development district. Recommendation to approve or disapprove will be sent to city commission. The city commission hearing will be held later this evening. Any member of planning zoning has a conflict of interest with this issue, they should so state abstain from participation. One abstention. The property in question is zoned as residential, general business and urban reserve, and as such would need to be rezoned to a planned development district. We have representatives from this project that want to speak on this subject.
Good evening, Steen Canton Planning Commission. Good to be before you today, tonight. Tanner, I know most everyone on the board. I am the director of the Canton Development Corporation, and I'm here to both speak to the what's in front of you tonight in terms of the rezone as well as the initial plan design, and also introduce you to our new developer out on our project as well as we have our engineer or a representative of our engineer's office and how to to answer any questions as it pertains to the to the development on the east side of Canton. So with that, let me just say I'm open to taking fielding questions. We can also bring up our developer and engineer at this time, and we can stand together as a united front, but whatever's most comfortable for you as a board.
I'd like that all three.
So I'll go ahead then and introduce you to our new developer on the on the job out there east of town, and that is Kelly Nielsen with Nielsen Construction.
Hi, thank you, Kelly Nielsen, Nielsen Construction, just here to address any concerns or requests you might have regarding our.
Good evening, Ari Hookstra, civil engineer with ISG. Open any questions and happy to help answer them this evening.
Well, the meeting, there's a being. Keep playing development unit is that you're hoping to ask for a variance of sorts from some of our standard design. So what are the elements in here that don't comply with our normal scheme?
Sure, sure. I think the biggest two would be the lot width. To my understanding, you have a standard ordinance of sixty-six foot wide is currently in place, and we're asking to reduce that down to fifty foot on a small personal lots and then fifty-eight foot on a few others. And within reason, everything else is either at the sixty-six, sixty-four, sixty-five, or sixty-six or bigger for the rest of the development. I think the total of fifty footers off of a quick count is nine lots of the there's a total of one hundred and fourteen lots within the proposed subdivision, single family, and we have nine of them that we're requesting to be at fifty foot wide. And then I believe there's seventeen of them that we're requesting to be fifty-eight foot wide. And then there's a few that are like sixty-five, sixty-four that are and then all the rest are above sixty-six. So I think that's a biggest request that I'm looking for.
And the other element was side setbacks.
Correct, thank you. Yep. Doing a five yard setback on the smaller lots to get to still having a forty foot wide build on the fifty footers. Go to five foot, gets you a little more home on the lot versus hallway and or garage.
Just on the small ones.
No, it's we're asking for the five foot on all of them.
Talking maximum structure closest it would be as five foot or you're talking about the wall and then two foot overhang, so it's only three foot?
The second, the foundation is what we're asking for would be at five foot. So if you do have a two foot soft it overhang, you'd be at three foot, yes.
I'm sure you've done this in other developments or communities.
Yep, the reason for the request is just trying to hit price point as products continue to increase, the largest expense of a single family home is the lot. And then if you add up all the different items that you can try to control and monitor, the lot expense is the most expensive part of any purchase. So if anything we can do, even if it's saving five thousand dollars on a lot cost, and we pick up that times every other penny, we can still hit some single family homes to be in that three hundred thousand dollar range. It's hard to get under three hundred thousand. Even with a fifty foot wide lot, it's still hard to get under three hundred thousand dollars for a single family home, but that's one step on us trying to get there. We feel there's a need for this price point product in Canton as we've done this type of development, these type of lots in eight different communities, roughly similar sizes to this, most recently in Lenox, Garrettson, Madison, Newton, Harrisburg, T. These are all communities that have either allowed this type of product in their standard ordinance, or we've requested something similar to what we're doing here tonight to try to hit a price point for the population of looking for that price point.
They all be bunched together.
Yeah, if you look, it's a looks like mostly have it there on the far west side is yes, we try to keep that price point of product similar so that we don't have a three hundred thousand dollar house proposed to be next to a seventy foot wide lot that potentially is going to have a four or five hundred thousand dollar house. That all depends on what they design and build. But yes, we try to kind of move our way from west to east with larger lots going far east side.
I had a question come up to me about whether or not would somebody be allowed to purchase two fifty foot lots and build one home?
Yes, the lots that were in the design and build are available for sale to everybody in the public, not specifically just for us. We are committed to building a fair amount of them, but we would also gladly sell off as many as somebody would build a.
But a covenant wouldn't prevent them from putting on one house on two lots?
Correct, they they would have that opportunity if they chose to, yes.
They can?
Yep.
And you mentioned the word covenant, is there a covenants?
There will be a covenants. We don't have that established at this point, but there will be a covenants. It'll be pretty general, this trying to control colors to some point, no livestock, like just some pretty vague things to make sure that typically just really complements what city ordinances already have, but we also do it in covenants. We fought it and we had to go back and call that livestock, to be honest, and say because of this you can't have.
So I I'm guessing since you're asking to do this tonight, this has worked well for you in those other communities, they the house, you built them, they sold, and it worked.
Yeah, I mean, I don't like to use other ones because every community is different and you guys know what you want in your community, but it has, to give you an example, that's recent, right? The market is, I ain't going to call it sour, but it's definitely not as good as it has been, like the sales and product and whatnot. The product that's consistently sold for us, and I'm going to use Sioux Falls, which I'm sure we all get tired of talking about using that as a benchmark, it is what it is, so the city of Sioux Falls were just a little into a project as well, and they actually went down to forty foot wide lots in that community just to even get to a lower price point. And that product was the only thing that there's five left, but in two years' time we sold sixty, there's sixty-three units total there, and I think we've sold forty-eight of them total of this single family, and there's still some twin homes that haven't sold yet. And it's really worked, I mean, nothing else, because they got in that three hundred or a little bit less price point being that small. And even in our other smaller communities, if we can hit that three to three twenty and less, they typically are selling. If we're three fifty plus, we're averaging sixty to sixty plus days on market. Some of them are sat there for a year if I get over three.
The ones that you're building? Most of the ones that you're building, garages?
Yep, everything will have a minimum that on me sized lots, everything have a minimum which you stall, unless I sell a lot and somebody does something different, but if I build it, it'll have a minimum which you stall.
On your covenants, fences and such, are people going to be able to put a fence up around like the backyard?
So we have kind of a standard covenants, and I don't know perfectly, but for the most part, yes, they can have a fence, hundred percent, and we usually require that at a minimum, but it has to be colored. It can still be chain link, but it has to be colored so that we don't let the galvanized ones be out there. But yes, they will have the ability to have a fence.
And I see that there is no commercial lots in this?
That's multifamily, we have, if we build on it, we have plans to be like a fourplex. She's looking at the reddish straight line product. We have a we have a plan that fits that width based on the five yard setbacks, five foot side yard setbacks. We do fourplex townhomes that would just be for sale if we end up building there, somebody else buys it, I don't know what they'll do for sure, but they're designed to be a town home unit. And then the brown property can be either multifamily or commercial. So there is some potential for commercial growth there depending on the end user. A lot of that was, we just kind of stayed with what was originally designed, and some of the layout of the design was due to the the original developers starting it, so we were kind of stuck with some of the streets and some of that a little bit.
Is there still going to be the two streets going up to the west and the ones?
No, there'll just be the one street going west.
Or the south one?
Uh, yes, sorry, I apologize, there's two, one of the red street, right, sorry, one of the multifamily and then one on the yellow lots. Yeah, there's two, I apologize.
Oh, that existing utility, we're going to, what are you going to have to move?
We're going to have to remove some of it, start over.
Streets got. I know it was addressed, but using the grant money that you're going to get it done in time?
That's the goal, if you guys are willing to work with us in a timely fashion and we can work together, the goal is yes, that the grant money is trying to get this approval done so that we can try to get as much construction done yet this season, which obviously it's November, so it's running out of time. And then we've already got the verbal ask to some of the underground utility guys and dirtwork guys that if we don't get part of now, we could hit it early in the spring, assuming we get approval, but we'd like to get the dirt work done yet this season in the perfect weather, weather's been pretty nice, so just giving us that opportunity, but we'll see what happens.
Yeah, they're.
Are we allowed that?
They're working on their, they've been talking to DOT, they're, you're going to perform a, there's a traffic study to get the highway eighteen access.
That's correct, the DOT requires that of us for an access point there, so we'll work with them on that, evaluative criteria for that, and if any improvements are required on the development.
Do you have any idea on your timeline for when you'll get back from state or?
Not yet, not at this point, but we've started, we've had one sit down conversation with them already, and we'll work through the traffic study and go through that, but feel good about the access point where it's proposed.
Okay.
Any other questions? I'll be hearing the work with you shortly. Do you have anything else you want to say before?
I would just say that we feel as a development corporation, a representative of them, we feel very fortunate to have Nielsen Construction come into Canton, they bring with them a very reputable, they have a very good reputation, and you know, obviously, we're excited for this, appreciate your consideration of what we put for you tonight.
Any other proponents for this? Are there any opponents here for this rezoning hearing? Nothing further, this hearing is now closed. Board, I entertain a motion to either recommend or not recommend approval to the city commission for the rezoning. Second, we have a motion and we have a second, Tiffany, could you call the role, please?
Ms. Harris Leffler. Iverson.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Garvers.
Aye.
Chairman Sean.
Aye.
Next item, this is. Hearing for. Approval of the initial, excuse, the initial development plan. This is the time and place for the hearing on the initial development plan for the Liberty Park Edition at parcel two hundred point five zero point five eight point zero zero one in the area between Riverview Road and Kenwood Drive and north of Fifth Street, which is Highway eighteen. We are hearing this as the planning and zoning commission. Hearing is now open. Purpose of the hearing, discuss and make recommendations to the city commission regarding the request for initial development plan for the development for the property located at parcel two hundred point five zero point five eight point zero zero one in this area between Riverview Road and Kenwood Drive and north of Fifth Street, Highway eighteen. Recommendation to approve or disapprove will be sent to the city commission. Any member of planning and zoning board has a conflict of interest with this issue, they should so state and abstain from participation. ISG has submitted a preliminary plan on behalf of Canton Economic Development Corporation for the property at parcel two hundred point five zero point five eight point zero zero one. Myron Adam from JSA has reviewed the plans and compiled a list of items to be addressed by the developer. As any note, the list may not be all inclusive and does not relieve the developer from meeting all that probable requirements for this developer. I want to invite representatives of the subdivision to come and talk about this.
Hello, said Canton Planning Commission, Jeff here again. With me this time, we have both Ari and Kelly Nielsen, and I'm glad to try to answer any questions you have for this. I have a feeling that Ari will be in front of the microphone a little bit more with this one.
Anyone have questions?
My question would be asking, you know, comments that JSA had on the. Are you going to have any trouble working with that? I'm assuming that you have seen the next.
Absolutely, yeah, I've got it in front of me here, I think, yeah, many of these things that JSA has brought up, we don't see any issue with anything here, meeting them and the requirements there.
And if our motion were to approve it with those things being taken care of, is there anything that wouldn't be something you could do, I guess?
From an engineering perspective, no, absolutely, we could execute on all of those requirements if you were to raise those as contingent elements of your approval. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any other she, someone would like to say about this?
I think we addressed a lot of it in the last public hearing, answered your questions. If not, we'd be glad to try to answer them yet, so thank you for your consideration.
Are there any?
Yeah, just one more thing I'll say is there are subsequent submittals that that follow this, and if any of those elements, you know, were to be requirements this evening, that those would be picked up and following submitted plans to the city.
Are there any components to this issue in the audience? Are there any opponents for this project in the audience? The hearing's on this, this hearing is now closed. I entertain a motion to recommend or not recommend approval to the city commission for this subdivision development district. Motion to approve. Motion to approve, we have a second. Tonya, second. Tiffany, could you call the role, please?
Ms. Harris Iverson. Peterson.
Aye.
Garvers.
Aye.
Leffler.
Aye.
Chairman Sean.
Aye.
Aye.
Do you have any other commissioners dialogue for the members of the planning commission?
Good luck.
Motion to adjourn.
So.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote? You're out, Mayor. See my picture?
Well, yeah, get to, yeah, or don't want to send your home. Yeah. Well.
Yeah.
It's great to see you again. Thank you. Are you, uh? Oh. You know that's what I do. Yeah, that's true.
Well, to Scott, I was talking to Scott. He said, well, citizens, I will be there to, to say anything if someone tries to put it, put in one.
First, I never get, I just shit him away. She was like, I never what? I never get this way again. I know.
That's why he's doing it.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order.
Consentions to the right among the United States of America to consider the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Are there any additions or corrections to the consent calendar?
Um, second.
On parole?
Commissioners Garbers.
Aye.
Peters.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Mayor Lundstrom.
Aye. Hey, are there any visitors to be heard tonight about anything that is not on the agenda? Just make your name and address and you know the drill. I've been.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commission, Chad Skiles, Canton. For the commissioners who were not present earlier for the planning and zoning special meeting, I am going to make a recommendation that you go back and you watch that meeting on stream. Because I want to commend one of the planning and zoning commissioners who stated upfront that he had a conflict of interest with the issues, abstained from not only the voting, but from the entire discussion and got up and left the post, the desk. And that's something that I have been pretty hard on you guys over the last number of years. That's how it should be done, not just abstaining from a vote, but still continuing to participate in the discussion because that can still steer a vote. And so I just wanted to mention that and say that's the way it should be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Michael Engel, Canton resident here. I just wanted to make a statement about the nuisances here in this town. I'm aware of the nuisances that go on and that there have been a number of complaints across the city and the city's working hard to deal with them. I, I feel, our, our family's just been absolutely sick with what's been going on here with all that. We've been trying to be compliant and accommodating. We know we've made wrong, but we're trying to make right. We have since cleaned the alleyways out, removed any of the tires, put licenses on any of the vehicles that are in the property. But we struggle to see where exactly junk is defined in and out. When I see onto the ordinances and everything that's on there, it's pretty clearly stated. I know that there is another business in town that is a dealership and they have over thirty-five vehicles on their property that don't have licenses. And they have numerous amounts of junk, which is very similar to what we have on our property. And I'm not trying to say someone's worse than somebody else. We all need to clean up the town, but we're just asking for a little bit of leeway. Like, we're trying to fix the situation. Today, it was very, very unsettling to have a trash out crew come to our property and haul off everything. And when Jeff Fillingsness, if I'm saying that right, was up there on the property, he said, everything's gotta go from the back to the front. And I have a hard time seeing how a car dealership can keep cars and extra parts there for their stuff, but we can't have anything over there. I, he example, like snow blowers and mowers, right? My old man runs a repair shop. He fixes things. They have value to him. They can get parts off them to repair other things for people in the town, right? Another big complaint was the bicycles in town. I don't know of anybody else in this town that has put more bicycles together for the youth in this town and put wheels under people who don't have money to get a bicycle. It's just really unsettling that they want to come in there and clear from the back of the shop out to over to the state ground and then tell him he can't have anything back there. It's just, it's, it's a little bit crazy, especially when you roll around and see everybody else in town. I mean, there are a number, number of other auto motor shops that have tons and tons of tires out with no attempt at all to keep water out of them or keep them stored properly. We would love to have a little bit of an extension. And I hope that the city can see that we're actually trying to get this taken care of. Is there anything you got to say?
I, I guess I don't honestly know where your property is located.
One twenty South Blair Street and one ten South Blair Street. Fillingsness came at us and said this has been a problem for years and years and years. And I've seen other properties in the area that have the same issue for a long, long time. And every time we've done a letter from the city, we've done our best to do and be accommodative, keep that alleyway clean, to keep the cars in order. But the cars that are back there are not like frame off, parts off. They're running and driving vehicles that have gone on there. Maybe they didn't have tags for a period of time, but we've put tags on them since. Like, I, I don't see how they're a hazard to anybody in town. I know at one point there was a concern that there was a hazard in town and the city moved for us to put a fence up around that property. We since have put a fence up on that property. It's been there for years. And now it comes back around again that it's, it's a hazard to the city. And I just don't see, if you had us put a fence up, how it can continue to be a hazard to the city. That's where I'm at on it. But thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else have something, visitors to be heard? If not, we'll move on. We have the old business and moving on to new business. We have the planned development district rezon hearing that was just held by the planning and zoning earlier this evening for the purpose of rezone for the Liberty, mm-mm, Liberty Park Edition at parcel two hundred dash fifty, dash fifty-eight, dash zero zero one. And decided on whether or not to recommend approval of passage. So I will be conducting the hearing for that for the city commission. This is the time and place for the hearing on the initial development plan for Liberty Park Edition at parcel two hundred dash fifty, dash fifty-eight, dash zero zero one in the area between Riverview Road and Canwood Drive and north of Fifth Street, which is highway eighteen. The hearing is now open. The purpose of this hearing is to receive any public comments regarding the request for the initial development plan for the development for the property located at what I stated before, in the area between Riverview and Canwood Road and north of Fifth Street. The Planning and Zoning Commission conducted their hearing earlier this evening and decided on it going forward to the Canton City Commission. If any member of the city commission has a conflict of interest with this issue, they should so state and abstain from participation in this hearing. I S G has submitted a preliminary plan on behalf of the C E D C for the property at parcel number two hundred point fifty, point fifty-eight, point zero zero one. Myron Adam with J S A reviewed the plans and submitted, submitted and J S A recommends approval of the preliminary subdivision plans. Contingent that the items listed in the review are addressed to the satisfaction of the city. As a note, the list may not be all inclusive and does not relieve the developer from meeting all applicable requirements for the development. So do any of you need to come forward and talk about that, address that to us?
Good evening, Canton City Commission, Mayor Lundstrom, Jeff Tanner, Canton Economic Development. We were very, very appreciative and I have with me my wingman this evening, Kelly Nelson with Nilson Construction. We also have Ari Hoekstra with I S G Engineering. We're very appreciative of the planning commission's favorable consideration of both the initial plan as well as the rezone amongst, for their public hearing just a little bit ago. And, but we want to open it up to, to you folks and try to answer any questions all of you may have as it relates to our development here on the east side of town.
Do you have any questions you'd like to ask?
So for this particular vote, it is for the rezone hearing. And the hearing request application has a map that I believe is an old map. Just want to make sure that that's fine, that the rezone hearing request application has an older map. It's not the newer map, because the, the legal description is still the same legal description.
I guess I'm not sure what map was submitted in the council or commission packets for all of your consumption.
That's, that's the map for the, the second thing, the initial development hearing. The rezone hearing has.
This is the map.
What was, yeah, that's the old map. So that has, doesn't have all of the development districts on there. Because now they have added different districts.
Just for the record, it's being reviewed right now by the engineering staff. Just a different color as well.
I think zoning of the property would still be to that P U D. So yes, you are correct in saying that the map with the hearing request for the zoning is different than what's included on the preliminary engineering plans. I think this, the rezoning request still stands in the sense that it's still a planned unit of development.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Are there any proponents to this issue? Are there any opponents to this issue? Hearing nothing further, the public hearing is now closed. Board, would you like to deliberate or I would entertain a motion to approve or deny this request?
I'm making motion to approve the rezone.
Second.
Do we not need to yet?
I think you did the better B instead of A. This hearing first instead of that one.
Wow. Well, we just switched them.
So, call roll?
Yeah.
Commissioners Peters.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Garbers.
Aye.
Mayor Lundstrom.
Aye. Okay, I did the wrong one. Well, I did this one with the hearing. Okay, this is for the initial development plan hearing. Or not? Yes. Planning and zoning conducted their hearing earlier this evening and the initial development plan hearing for the Liberty Park Edition submitted by the Canton Economic Development Board, parcel nine. parcel number 200-50-58-001, decided on whether or not to recommend approval of passage. They did recommend, Planning and zoning did recommend to pass that to come to the City Commission. And I'll not hold the hearing for that one. Okay, this is the time and place for hearing on the proposed rezone for the Liberty Park Edition at parcel 200-50-58-001 in the area between Riverview Road and Canwood Drive, north of Fifth Street, which is Highway 18. The hearing is now open. The purpose of this hearing is to discuss the request to rezone the property located at the parcel number and in the area between Riverview Road and Canwood Drive and north of Fifth Street. The request is to rezone to a planned development district. The Planning and Zoning Commission conducted their hearing earlier this evening and decided on whether or not to recommend the approval, which they did. If any member of the City Commission has a conflict of interest with this issue, they should so abstain, state and abstain from participation in this hearing. The property in question is currently zoned as residential, general business and urban reserve, and as such would need to be rezoned to a planned development district. And do you need to bring anything up with that?
Mayor Lundstrom, City Commission. I just would be answering any questions you may have, but it's applicable or the same as before. Just a different consideration before you.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, are there any proponents to this issue? Are there any opponents to this issue? Hearing nothing further, the public hearing is now closed. And I'll entertain a motion for first reading on this rezone, which only requires a motion.
Motion.
Oh, we just need a motion, okay. Okay, moving forward. We need to approve liquor wine license renewals. Twelve licenses are up for renewal for liquor or wine licenses for the year 2026. All sales taxes and property taxes must be paid in order for the state to consider the renewals. And the city verifies that the property taxes are paid and all paperwork is completed before the application is sent to the state. The state will check the sales taxes and will hold the application until sales taxes are up to date. This requires a motion and a second to approve the completed applications.
Motion to approve the application.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Do you like to, no? Do you want to call roll?
Commissioners, Carlson. Aye. York.
Aye.
Garbers.
Aye.
Pickers. Aye. Mayor Lundstrom.
Aye.
Next is hours work on holiday. The city personnel manual states an employee required to work on a paid holiday observed by the city will receive a floating holiday for those days worked. And do you have anything you'd like to add to this?
Yes.
Explain this.
Yeah, we just recently approved this when we updated the personnel manual. But I was coming from a background where if you worked on a holiday, then you only got the pay from the work that you did and you didn't get the holiday pay. And hence why I would like to create a floating holiday. But, and Canton had already been agreed to that the employees get their holiday pay on top of the pay for the work that they perform. So giving them a floating holiday would be very redundant and paying them three times for that work. Did not want to continue to push with this policy if it might learn all that. So I asked you just to repeal it before it has been taken effect.
Does anybody have any comments on this, discussion?
So a motion to repeal would be?
Make it so you do not get a floating holiday if you work on a holiday.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Anybody else have any comments on this? Can you call roll?
Commissioners, York.
Aye.
Garbers.
Aye.
Pickers. Aye. Carlson. Aye. Mayor Lundstrom.
Aye.
Okay, the next item is the 2026 COLA. The proposed COLA increase is 3% and is based on the state's new minimum wage increase to $11.85. And that is from, it was $11.50. Wages for 2026 will be determined from the step and grade presented in the salary resolution meeting, and a motion is required to approve the 2026 step and grade.
When you click on the agenda item for this and it brings up our chart, it incorrectly says 5% on the top of the chart. I have an updated chart here that says 3%. You'll see that the math for the chart is still the same, that it's 3%.
The numbers haven't changed. It just says 5%. These numbers are actually 3%.
Correct.
That was gonna be my big question. Okay.
Do you want to see it? Either? Okay. There you go, you can have that back. So this requires a motion and a second. Motion to approve. Second. Any discussion? Do you want to call roll?
Commissioners, Garbers.
Aye.
Pickers. Aye. Carlson. Aye. York.
Aye.
Mayor Lundstrom.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is the in-town pay increase, in-town residency pay increase. It is being recommended to grant a one-time step increase for employees that live within city limits effective immediately. A motion is required to approve the step increase for employees that live within the city limits.
I'd actually make a motion to table it so we can gather more information. I'll second that.
Okay, motion and second has been made to table this information, or this item. You want to call roll?
Commissioners, Pickers. Aye. Carlson. Aye. York.
Aye.
Garbers.
Aye.
Mayor Lundstrom.
Aye.
Okay, next goes rubble site hours. It's being recommended that the winter rubble site hours are changed to Monday, Wednesday and Saturday from 10:00 in the morning till 4:00 in the afternoon by the city administrator. Discussion to close or open dependent on weather conditions.
So this will, this will give us, myself, obviously discussing with department head, Commissioner York's area, and also, like, maybe if I'm not aware that the rain is dampening the mood of the rubble site on a given day or whatever, or if the snow comes in, winter finally arrives, we can change the hours without coming back too long. And the same will even be come spring. Spring arrives a little sooner. We'll grow up to just adjust the hours without having to come back there. But the immediate changes, it's keeping us open two more days a week going into our winter season.
What's the necessity for adding the two more days? Like, do we have numbers there or do we have?
You know, I mean, we have numbers here over here, but like last year, there was a free branch pile available this time of year. It wasn't up until halfway through this year. But that branch, that's not available right now. So that's part of what we're trying to, it feels like falls lingering around a little longer. And there's also not that branch pile to drop off. That's, this creates more accessibility to do that every time.
So it's really just to, because they don't have a branch pile or like?
It's, yeah, to accommodate the citizens so they're able to drop off.
It might seem to be out there for hours on end, you know? Kind of hope that.
Like, if the numbers are not making it make sense, we won't continue on, but.
Okay. All right, so I mean, it's something we can look at just to make sure like this isn't, you know? We can decide, you know, it's not being used, it's not being, you know, I'd hate to keep him out there with nothing to do when he could be doing other things. So just be good with it, just as long as we're keeping in mind.
Yeah. And I discussed this with you, Andrew, but the discretion is more or less from you. So one of you, Colleen, so these people that use it, when are they gonna know if weather's closing that day, the day before?
Well, I mean, if it's raining that morning, then we'll post it on the website and on Facebook. If it's a day of change for weather, it'll be on the website and on Facebook and push notification through the app. But if it's, as we're falling into a predictable snow coming into the month or something like that, we'll try to call it out a week or more in advance.
I guess I am there with Sarah. I have discussed with you two, I'm okay trying it. I mean, we worked or something like that a year or two ago, we changed it to bus hours. And now we're going back to what we did. There was a reason that we changed it because it wasn't warranting the hours. I mean, all for something that we need, but... I mean, we also are working on a other branch drop off. So if we do get that, is this null and void immediately? Is it bringing back to the commission? Or is that a view or what is, what are we?
I think that'll still be up to me. But I would say that, yeah, the the branch pile comes back somewhere else that.
Because I looked at that with the most, 80, 90% of that is branched. And begin with, we don't get paid for anything for branch, so I guess we just don't, like Sarah mentioned, I just don't want to have Mike out there that we had three people that don't pay anything and we had three drop offs all day to warrant it.
Yeah. We said this for, we said this for years, that it's unfortunate that we're paying someone to sit out there. It seems crazy that we're paying someone. So we've always been told, well, we have to have someone out there because of the other items that are in the rubble site. So we've been looking for a location to dump these branches. Yeah. So. Yeah, if that location becomes available, then. I think that needs to be a top priority. And I don't want this to be looked in the elephant in the room. But when I was out there last, there were two other companies that looked at me and said, "So you're telling me this closes on November 1st?" And I said, "Yes." Then what are we gonna do? I said, "Lenox or Inwood." They're open 24/7.
Just for the people listening, now what are, what, if we don't change it, what are our, what are ours?
Gosh, took me a while.
I believe it's Wednesday 10 to 4 and last Saturday 10 to 4.
So you get to do work in Canton on Wednesdays, four days a month, and on that last Saturday. Otherwise, good luck.
Any other discussion?
So we're asking for every Saturday?
Yes.
Is this gonna create overtime for anybody?
No.
So your discretion, if Mike is sick, we close it?
That or somebody's salary will take it. Which is me, Dennis, Bill. Kyle, while he's laid up with his knee, might love it.
You want to make a motion?
You can also adjust it right now. I mean, drop the Saturday off a bit, stick to the one Saturday a month.
I think Saturday should stay. That's when people have the day off. I don't have a problem with Saturdays.
Monday's the day after Saturday, so I agree. Maybe do a Wednesday, Saturday.
I'm okay with keeping it as suggested, Monday, Wednesday and Saturday, until we can get, you're gonna get some numbers, get some idea. If we find out Mondays, there's nobody. We've got Mondays, if we find out Wednesdays, there's nobody. We can drop Wednesdays. You know, I think, I think it's not, doesn't hurt us to either try for a month or two and then decide, you know, this is not working, we need to cut back.
Yeah.
So I'd make a motion to approve the change for all the site hours.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? You want to call roll?
Commissioners, Carlson. Aye. York.
Second.
Garbers.
Aye.
Pickers. Aye. Mayor Lundstrom.
Aye.
Okay, next on the agenda is the supplemental appropriation ordinance. In order to not exceed the original appropriation, the city will need to make some adjustments to the budget through a supplement. These are items that were not originally budgeted but were carried over from 2024 or had City Commission approval. The general fund total is $1,161,386. And you all received these explanations. And so, it's open for discussion or comments or motions.
Just a question, do we need to explain it for the people listening?
What?
Do we need to explain what that amount, how it came to that amount for the people listening?
I don't know if we know this. It is, it's direct costs incurred this year that were not entirely budgeted for. Some of the items were budgeted for in the sense that we've been setting savings to the side for these items, such as the siding of the fire department and the roof of the library. Some items were the result of wind damage and money coming in and out from insurance, such as the light poles downtown. And other items were, a lot of them were related to the pool. Some of that was not knowing exactly where to zero in on the operating and maintenance of the pool, the ongoing annual costs. And some of it was related to still, still finalizing the construction of the pool, buying some startup items like the tables and the chairs and that we just, we had some left over from the previous run of the pool, but bought a lot of that.
Throwing away.
Right, the turf at the pool, which is installed now. If you've had a chance to see it, it's the greenest grass in town. And then also some of that, again, FEMA money coming in to the airport. So, yes, it's, some of it, like I said, it was planned in the sense that we were setting money aside for it. And this is the year that we decided to tackle it. So that came out of money being set aside for that purpose. And then like pools coming out of cash on here and surplus. Because we genuinely did not know how to target those, those ongoing costs for the year.
Motion.
Okay, that's all we need for the first reading, okay? Move on. Okay, we have a first reading for ordinance amending water and sewer rates. This ordinance includes amendments to the water rates for the second year increase relating to the South Dakota Rural Water bulk water rate increase that had initially not been passed on to us after the contract was first signed. South Lincoln Rural Water has agreed to break the increase over two years. The first increase was incorporated in 2025 and the second increases to be incorporated in 2026. This ordinance also includes updates to sewer rates and the addition of a separate water rate for services outside of city limits. If this ordinance is given a first reading, the second reading will take place on November 17th. It will then be It will then be published on November 26th, and effective date will be December 17th. The rate would take effect on January 1st bill, which includes water usage from November 20th through December 22nd. And a motion is required for a first reading on this.
Last year, we decided to break this into two years versus all at once, just so folks understand. This is the second year. I make a motion.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second? Oh, no, we don't need it, never mind. Crosswalk painting. Justin Hine, engineer with ISG, sent a quote on behalf of Sir Lines A Lot Traffic Control and Striping for pavement markings on Highway 18 in Dakota Street. The quotation has two quotes, one for epoxy paint and one for waterborne paint. ISG recommends the waterborne paint. The cost of the entire project using the waterborne paint is $28,766. Would that get done yet this year, or do we have to wait for next year?
It would, if the weather continues to hold like it is, it would get done this year. We would have loved to have done the epoxy paint, because it would hold for five years or more, but it is just, it is way more expensive than what the waterborne paint is, so just, we can't do that, consider that, unfortunately. It's still makes sense to go with Sir Lines A Lot. It was, one and only mission as a company is traffic control and pavement markings. They'll have a much more consistent design to the crosswalks on our two busiest streets, and they'll be taking care of traffic control on their own. If we were doing that on our own, it would almost be every hand on deck for our departments to be doing the traffic control plus the painting, so it'll be a quick in and out for this guy.
And how long does this waterborne last?
A year.
So this is something we have to do yearly?
Yep.
So what's the difference between what they do and what our teenagers do, I mean?
The consistency of the look of the crosswalk will be better. And where our summer staff does it, they don't do any traffic control, because they're doing on the slower residential streets.
Well, they've done it on Fifth Street, I mean, I've watched them, so I mean, they do some traffic control and they paint them, and yes, I would say they, it's never the same. But if this, if this paint is just as crappy as the paint that we painted before, I don't, I don't know, you know? I was hoping for something a little better, because the crosswalks on Fifth Street are non-existent. They paint them, and they're gone in months. Because we have 10,000 cars a week go across those crosswalks. And I feel like spending $28,000 for them to be gone in a couple of months, when our teenagers have painted it for 5,000, you know, for 5,000, and it does the same thing, I don't know, I just, I would like to see more of a bang for the buck for that much money.
How much is?
So, is this epoxy one, is this the cost of what it would be if we went with a five-year? I mean, because if you break, if we have to do this every year, I mean, we'd be hitting that at the, if we spend 28,000, we'd be three years, I mean, in three years, we would hit the amount that we'd be using for epoxy.
A year?
I mean, like, I mean, in terms of money, I mean, we'd be spending more money in a five-year timeframe than we would be if we just went with epoxy to start with.
Ari, are you familiar with this quote?
Yeah, I reviewed it.
So, well, he's coming up. Is epoxy paint what they use on Highway 18, because Sir Lines A Lot did that, is that what it would be?
Yeah, I would have to review that again with what they did on Highway 18. Sometimes with those heavier DOT applications, they're actually doing like a, what's a thermoplastic sticker?
Yeah.
With a grind, which is even, I would say, a more upgraded version of the pavement markings quoted here.
Yeah, the, yeah, what's on 18 is that sticker, and they can.
They grind.
They grind it, and then they put it.
Yeah, whereas the box is, it's not that, it's better than the waterborne paint, it's gonna last longer. But, you know, it's gonna go just right on top of the concrete, won't involve grinding.
And for you, if that quote is what, $75,000 or something like that for epoxy? Then we're, we gotta send it off the beds, correct?
Yeah, I mean, the, they're probably gonna end up exempting it, because there's only one company that does it, but yeah.
Who is that? TSI Traffic Solutions Incorporated?
They merged into this company. There were two companies that did this, and they merged into Sir Lines A Lot.
Does it wanna get in trouble if we, I agree, I think it makes sense to go to that better one at this moment. It might be redundant, but if we send it out, our butt is covered.
Yeah, it looks to me like, when you look on this, this is formerly known as Traffic Solutions and Dakota Traffic Services.
Yeah, those were the two competing companies.
Yeah, I, I told last week, or last meeting, I'm on the group for the bicycle safety, and we talked about, we went out and we walked Fifth Street and looked at the crossings and the crosswalks, and how, you know, they're just, they're dangerous, you know, and none of the cars stopped. I mean, I cross this highway three to four times a day on the weekdays, and I can tell you that very few cars stop for me, and I've had cars near misses, like literally, I could just touch the car as it drove right by. And I'm not saying that crosswalks make difference, but when crosswalks are visible, people are more likely to stop, because right now, they don't, they think I'm in the wrong, because they don't see a crosswalk. And I just feel like spending $30,000 to paint some crosswalks that are gone in mere few months is, is not worth our money in any way, considering we're painting these because we have, we've had kids recently hit by cars on this highway because there's been no crosswalks. So, I mean, if we need to take this to bed to see, I'm more than happy with that, because I don't, I don't know that I'd be willing to pay $30,000 to throw some paint on it now, because I could do that.
Well, do we pass a tonight contingent's engineer's review on requirement for bid law with? With the epoxy? The epoxy? Because if, if there's only one vendor out there, I don't know what bidding is gonna say.
There's nobody else around?
No, I would say these guys are the provider for pavement markings in the area. I mean, we can do our due diligence if they were to go off the bed or reach out to a larger pool, but those are gonna be out of state, folks.
I make a motion to send it up to bed to do the epoxy. If it's only the one, then move forward with it.
I would.
Is it efficient for you?
Okay.
And I would recommend, I guess, us reviewing bid law before.
Yeah.
Making that full recommendation.
Yeah, maybe.
What he said.
What he said.
Engineer to review bid law.
Engineer to review bid law.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second, can you call roll?
Commissioners York.
Aye.
Garbers.
Aye.
Pickers.
Aye.
Carlson. Aye.
Mayor Lundstrom.
Aye.
Okay, next on the agenda is the loader rental agreement. Decker Equipment and Rentals have submitted a rental agreement for, whatever, however you say that. It's an eight-wheel loader for winter season. The rental agreement is for $5,097.60 per month. What have we been paying?
Right around that.
Right around that, okay.
The number of hours that were available were a little different. Previously, we've gone with case out of Sioux Falls, but got this local quote from Decker here, so it was, it was competitive with what else is out there, and we'll be paying it fast, and the equipment will work with our attachments.
Okay.
That was, I just, I made note that it said, "Decker Equipment is good with cutting a hole in the cab of loader on agreement." And I just wondered, what is that for?
Yeah.
Why are we cutting a hole in it?
You need the, the, oh gosh, forget what it's called, but the attachment we put on the front of it, that, that can turn into a blade or a box. Cage? Yeah, a cage box, in order to operate it, it's a hole in the cab to get the control in there, so. Yeah, that was, I mean, it is a sticking point, right? Are you gonna let us do this? And they were fine with that.
I'm looking at the quote, we pay sales tax.
We don't pay sales tax on it, but it's just considered a use tax. It looks like a sales tax, we do pay use tax. Well, we don't pay it, we don't have to.
And what month were you, I'm looking, I don't see a month, when were you thinking about starting this?
It says on here, start 18th of September 2025, and ends, the S is October of 2025, so that doesn't make any sense. It starts and ends before right now.
Did you know what month we normally pick that up?
No, sure.
What month we normally pick it up, it's been kind of contingent on, but whether, last year, we were like, hold up, hold up, hold up. Yeah, yeah.
I should discuss this, but I guess, being that close, it'd be nice not to pick it up until it's in the 10-day forecast that we might need. And it's not in the 10-day forecast right now.
No, it's not, November's looking pretty good.
So would this contract really start the first month we need it, or it starts like right now, and it just sits there?
That's what my question is.
Yep, I honestly don't know the answer to that, and I don't know if they would say, well, if they have someone else that comes in and wants it for two months, if we don't pick it up right away, then we're settled, or not. I don't think so, we've committed to a pretty long-term rental, whether we pick it up in November, December.
And last year, we didn't, oh, but then paying the half, it's like a longer last year.
I hope that's the case.
You mean washed out?
Yep. I did not say cold. I said snow.
I'll make the motion that we accept this without the sales tax, if that's what it is, and if they're willing to work with us on start date and end date.
End date.
That'll be my motion. So we're gonna have to table it?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Can you call roll?
Commissioners Garbers.
Aye.
Pickers.
Aye.
Carlson. Aye.
York.
Aye.
Mayor Lundstrom.
Aye.
Okay, that concludes all the items on the agenda for the evening, we'll have a closer dialogue. Paul, do you have anything?
I brought it up before, I've had a couple people ask, floodlights at the pool, are they on for a reason at night? I don't know, we need to get them shut off.
I haven't heard of them.
They were on last night.
The ones attached to the building?
The ones pretty high, no, no. I can see maybe one smaller dimmer, but I can't imagine what that electricity is for them, two big lights being on.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Jackie?
No.
Kara?
There was a meeting tonight up at the high school for internet safety that DCI put on. I obviously was not there, but my husband went up there, and he said it was well-attended, which is good. So hopefully, our kids, including mine, learn some things. So that was good, that the, the school was able to get that in our town, and DCI was willing to come out here and do that for us.
Yes, indeed, and the kids, some of the high school kids that did attend would get extra credit for their class, so that was nice. Do you want anything, Chris?
I have nothing.
You have nothing? Okay, I can't figure anything that I know. So, we don't want to bid.
No, we don't.
So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Chris got the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Can you call roll?
Commissioners Pickers.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Garbers.
Aye.
Mayor Lundstrom.
Aye.
Maybe there's a adjourn.
Cool. Glad to be that wrong.
You thought it'd be 10:00.
I am.